Clark, Curtis, are you prepared? You are. So with that, we'll call our meeting to order. And then first up, are there any additions or additions to the agenda this evening? Hearing done. We entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support. Motion support. Last chance for comments, questions. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. We have an agenda. First up, Rokow. Are you taken?
Yes, thank you.
We're completed. Okay. Next, we'll be in Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone's raised, if there is a pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, we'll entertain a motion for approval of the November 28, 2023 regular meeting of this body. Support. And motion support. Any comments, questions, additions, questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried. We'll move down to hearings. First up, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows to consider an application from Blair Capital LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property at 127 East Superior Street. Support. And motion in support. Any comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we have a hearing. Who's leading us?
Yes, yes. Mr. Smith is at his daughter's Christmas recital, so he was in the 10 to 9.
Priorities are important.
Yes, and we've talked about this project a couple times. Couple meetings ago, we did approve the commercial rehabilitation district. This is the second part of that. The certificate application itself, the improvements to be done to the building include electrical plumbing, HVAC, sewer line improvements, fire separations between the food service section of the building to the rear of the building and the office section off the front. Total estimated cost of the improvement is $163,000. The value, or sorry, the mounting years can be a maximum of 10 years. We have recommended that the full amount of those 10 years for the exemption on the for a percentage of the increase in value. And their anticipated completion date for the project is actually end of this month is what they're shooting for, so December 31st.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board?
I just, I had a question. I don't remember Ryan mentioning the word restaurant in there, but The Morning Sun had quoted it as restaurant. Is that true?
Yeah, it's a food service. It's a smoothie, and they'll be doing sandwiches. So not like a full-blown, full menu, you know, hood, those sort of things.
Right. Okay. Not a full commercial kitchen.
Commercial kitchen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Are there any comments or questions from the members of the public that would like to address this particular topic? So please go to the podium, state your address, and share your thoughts. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone come forward at this time, so we entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved. And motion support. Last chance. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The hearing is closed. Next, we are to consider a resolution to approve the application for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for the property at 127 East Superior from Blair Capital LLC. Your pleasure. Motion support. Okay, are there any more comments or questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried, and the certificate is approved. Number two, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows to consider finalization of the Iowa Street Special Assessment District Rule Number One of 2020 for the construction of sanitary sewer leads. Your pleasure.
Move to open a public hearing.
And motion support. Any comments, questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried, and we have a public hearing. You in charge again?
Dave will be taking care of these hearings for the laterals and the side.
Dave likes the silver.
Seems to be. You always get fun stuff, don't you? Assuming that's why everybody's here, so I apologize if you don't like listening to me. I might be up here for a little bit tonight. So I'm Dave Ringel, Public Services Director, and as mentioned, our first public hearing is for the construction and finalization of the sanitary sewer leads on Iowa Street. Back a while ago, we did the hearing for the proposed project of, this is to set the final costs. This is the area that was part of the special assessment district, and if everyone remembers, whether you have a sanitary connected here or not, we added your address just because we cannot add them after the fact, but we can always delete people if they're not connected or if they have plastic sewer that's already connected. This was the proposed district that we looked at. Curtis, could you zoom up just a little bit on that, please? Just to kind of give an idea of where we're at for the estimates. We had an estimated cost of $68 a lineal foot for the pipe, $350 for each Y, and $330 for each clean out. And it depended on how much frontage, or excuse me, I'm sorry, frontage. What we did was put in a ballpark number of what it takes to get into each house, depending on if you're close to sanitary, that's pretty well in the center. But the city would pay for half, the property owner would pay for the other half. If you had plastic, you didn't get a cost, but we put everybody on there with an estimated footage. And if it allows me, can you go to the next slide? Zoomed up so it doesn't look weird. And this is the final cost. So what this is, we measured exactly what went in the ground for plastic pipe that we would replace for the city for each address. You see some zeros on there. The zero means either it wasn't connected to Iowa Street or if it was previously plastic when we opened up the street. So in those cases, homeowners were charged anything, but if it was anything other than plastic, the city would pay for half up to what was replaced. So you see the total frontage, or excuse me, total lineal footage. Some of them are looking at 10 foot, maybe there was plastic just outside of the curb line and was connected to that. So anytime we found the plastic was connected, some went a little longer, some went a little shorter, just depending on the condition of the clay. But those were in-the-ground actual measurements. The cost per foot based off the contract cost was $91.50. Each Y was $573, and the clean out was $464. So if anybody previously had clay, we would put in plastic pipe, the line obviously to connect to the sanitary sewer and the clean out for their access in the future if there's any kind of issue with the clay line or if it's ever replaced, contractor knows exactly how much to go to before they find new plastic. The idea is to keep cuts out of brand-new roads. If anybody has any questions about why this is done, aging infrastructure, look on Pine Avenue, what just happened here in the last few days, when we put in new streets, the idea is we put them in and want them to last as long as possible. So we replaced the sanitary, excuse me, sanitary sewer laterals underneath the road. Two reasons. One is the clay's not getting any better with age, or if it's orange-burg, it'll fall apart. Number two is makes watertight connections, so we have less clear water in the sanitary sewer. It reduces people's bills, reduces the amount of water that the wastewater plant has to process. So it's a couple of different reasons, but the biggest reason really that helps out is makes the streets last longer, so we don't have to come back into them to replace laterals later.
Clarification. So out of the 938, so for me, it says 18 feet, so that's 18 total feet of pipe, including the clean out to ground level down?
The clean out is its own individual item. The lineal footage is from the main to whatever we find. We get outside of the curb line, and then we're looking for clean clay to connect to.
Okay.
Some of those might be a little longer if the clay was broken or cracked. We go to the next available joint that doesn't have an issue with it. So that 18 foot goes from the main to the connection point of where we found good pipe to connect to. The lateral is a one lump, excuse me, the clean out is a one lump sum. If that thing's 10 foot high or 4 foot high, it's still that same flat cost of $464.
Excuse me, Dave. Can we hear your name for the record, too, please?
My name's Scott Warner.
Scott Warner. Thank you.
Sorry.
Could you scroll up a little bit so that I can see my address? Thank you.
Are you seeing it?
Is that far enough?
So I'm assuming this doesn't have anything to do with the cement driveway then?
Nothing to do with it. Do you want to do the name of the address?
Sir?
Mark Crabb, 1006 Iowa Street.
Are there any other questions? Anybody on the board have questions? Or any members of the public, it's a hearing, so.
So I have one question. If your yard wasn't dug up, this is from the main to the middle of the road, is that what?
The main is typically close to the middle of the road, so it's, I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head where this one's at, there's a lot of mains, but it goes from the center of the main to likely underneath your sidewalk, it might even be a little bit on your, might even be on your side of the sidewalk, depending on what we found for pipe, for the, for the condition of the existing lateral sewer pipe.
Thank you.
Sue Brodeck, 905 Iowa. So does that mean now that you guys connected to my plastic pipe that I already had in my yard to the sewer?
What's your address?
905.
905.
There's a top one.
There's 18 feet there, so underneath the road, there must not have been plastic. But if there was plastic within visibility just outside of that curb line between the sidewalk and curb.
Yeah, there would have been.
If we found plastic there, we'd love to connect to that, so.
Okay, okay.
If it was, back in certain eras, sometimes people didn't have the money or just, if it was broken in the yard, they might go a certain amount of footage from the house with plastic. Sometimes they went all the way to the sidewalk, sometimes they stopped shy so they could avoid the right-of-way permit fee, so I can't exactly say what happened at your house.
Are there any questions? I'm not hearing any, so we entertain a motion to close the hearing at this point. We have motion support. Last chance for comments. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we close the hearing. So next up, we are to adopt a resolution to approve the Iowa Street Special Assessment District Rule Number One of 2020 to establish a payment schedule and set the interest rate.
Move to adopt.
Support. Okay, and I'm told the five-year treasury bond rate as of 12/12/23 is 4.25%. And the ordinance calls for us to add 1% to that, so the rate would be at 5.25% if people choose to not pay it in full upfront. So we need to set a timeframe as well in this motion, do we?
We need to add the date, the number of installments, and the interest rate.
Okay, so number of installments, I think typically we do five years.
That's what we have done in the past. Anywhere five to seven or 10.
Typically, three to five, three to five, whatever the board feels comfortable with. The interest rate is charged. I'm sure stuff, if I misspeak. The interest rate is charged upfront, so once it's, that 5.25 is applied, that's the one time, and they can, you can avoid that by coming in and paying it before July 1st and no interest. Or if it does, you want to take a year or two years, the interest rate is put on right at the beginning, so it's established whatever that dollar amount is on the interest. So if you want to pay it off in one, two, three years, the interest is the same over that time period, it's just broken out.
The interest rate is the same?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So, but although the interest isn't charged upfront?
Yes, it is.
It is. So you pay five years' worth of interest as added to the bill upfront?
Yeah, we just apply.
So the full five?
Whatever, whatever has not been paid as of June 1st or whatever dates, typically we do June 1st. Whatever date is not, we apply a 5.25% interest at that point and then spread that out over a five-year installment.
Okay.
Whatever Alan says.
They said July 1st.
5.5%.
5.5.
Send me.
No, no, you're fine.
Do I, or do you just hug on the wall?
Are there any comments or concerns? Do we want to do five years again, or is there?
I would say five years.
I think five years. Makes sense for those who.
So I move to set the due date of June 1st, 2024. If you're unable to pay on June 1st, or June 1st, 2024, then you have five years to pay it at an interest rate of 5.25%.
Okay. Sets amendment to your earlier motion? Okay, support. Support it. Okay, we're all good. Any further questions or comments? Is it clear to everyone? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we've set the rate and the payment schedule. So number three, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows to consider a finalization of Iowa Street Special Assessment District Rule Number Two for construction of sidewalks. Your pleasure on sidewalks tonight.
Motion for change.
Support. And motion support. Any comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Hearing is open. And it looks like Dave's in the hot seat again.
As the mayor mentioned, this is for the special assessment for the portion of sidewalk on, it's called Iowa Street, but it's actually along Charles Avenue, and it goes from Iowa Street up to the park and ride. Here's a picture that shows the area that was installed as a part of the Iowa Street construction project. And it was assessed to the property owner adjacent, and this is what the estimated amount was for, was $22.50, $22.50 a lineal foot, 132 feet of frontage along Charles Avenue. And the contract cost came in at $27 a lineal foot. City footage is 132, and city share a half and the property owners share a half in the total cost.
Okay. Comments or questions from the board?
This is just a connector. You know, it's, we can only build these things piecemeal. We can't afford to do them all at once, so as we come to places where we can connect sidewalk, and this is one of them, and also it connects up into a park, and like Dave said, it's a park and ride, and then that connects into the rail trail that runs east and west, so an important piece to tie in.
And we typically build them less expensive when we're in conjunction with projects, the bigger projects.
Pretty much so. Yeah, because we have a little crews on site doing curb work and driveway approaches at the same time, so, yeah.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Are there members of the public that would like to comment or have questions? Don't hear any, so with that, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
And motion support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried, and the hearing is closed. We are now to entertain, to entertain adopting a resolution to approve the Iowa Street Special Assessment District Rule Number Two of 2020 to establish a payment schedule and set the interest rate once again on this project. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt that the payment is due on June 1st, 2024. If it's unable to be paid, they have five years at 5.2%.
Okay.
5.2 or 5.2?
5.2.
5.2.
So moved.
Support.
I think it was Michelle's.
I think Michelle's motion. I don't know where you guys supported this.
Michelle's motion.
I don't know, he gets it, but. Okay, is that good?
Yes. We're drinking this with something.
Okay. We have motion support on the table. Any comments, questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. Thank you. Moving to number four, hold a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows to consider finalization of the Harvard Avenue Special Assessment District Rule Number One of 2023 for the construction of sanitary sewer leads. Your pleasure for more sewer work.
Move to open a public hearing.
And motion support. Comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. We have a hearing. David?
Similar stories before. This is Harvard Avenue. If you'll leave a picture, this is in conjunction with the Harvard Avenue reconstruction. This is the region that the special assessment entails. See, those were superior, up too fast here. And same thing as before, excuse me, sorry about that. We included every house along there as part of the initial SAD with the idea that we can remove houses if they're not connected, and also if there's plastic pipe there to connect to, we can remove them as well. So this was the initial estimate, or excuse me, proposal that was brought before the commission with estimated costs. See, it's $110 per lineal foot for a pipe, $500 for each Y, $510 for each clean out, whoops, excuse me, city share, property owners share, and total cost. And here is the final cost. This is, it is well the same story as before. The amount of footage that it took for us to go from the center of the main out to just beyond the curb line, typically between the curb and sidewalk, a lot of these, that sidewalk is close to the curb, so sidewalk traditionally kind of bit the dust away to the sidewalk to connect to the laterals that were there. Same thing, whatever it took to get us a good clean pipe to connect to, we don't want to connect to cracked or broken pipe or anything of that nature. And if anybody had plastic previous, they, we don't special assess them, or if they were not a part of this sewer and they weren't connected, we didn't charge them as well.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the members of the public? This is a public hearing. Not seeing any from anyone. All those, I guess we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Can't make that motion, sorry.
So moved.
Hey, we have motion support. Any final comments, questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and the hearing is closed. We are now to consider adopting a resolution to approve the Harvard Street, or Harvard Avenue Special Assessment District Rule Number One of 2023, establishing a payment schedule and setting an interest rate. Your pleasure thereof.
I'm moved. Okay, move to approve the special assessment due on June 1st, 2024, pay five years at 5.25% interest.
Well said. And support. Everybody clear? Any questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we set the payment schedule and interest rate once again. Moving to number five, we are to hold a public hearing at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows to consider Harvard, finalization of the Harvard Avenue Special Assessment District Rule Number Two of 2023 dealing with the construction of sidewalks. Your pleasure.
Move to open a hearing.
And motion support. Comments? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. So, David?
Starting to feel like we've been here before a little bit, but this one is a different street, it's Harvard sidewalk, similar story as what Iowa was. There's one section of sidewalk that was constructed to connect two sidewalks, one adjacent to the, excuse me, one at the north end, basically one stretch in front of one house. Two addresses, though, are going to be specially assessed for this, but this is the area where the sidewalk was interconnected. This was the estimated cost for that project, as well as the estimated frontages along those properties. You can see the cost per foot on each of those. That was for the proposed, excuse me. Here's the final cost. The final came in at $33 a lineal foot to do that. 904 Vassar, 75 feet of frontage, 614 West Spirit would accomplish 20 feet of that, and the cost for the entire project, as well as split 50-50 between the adjoining property owners and the city of Elma.
Okay. Comments or questions?
And again, this is connecting some sidewalks together, and to the west of Vassar, there's another piece. When we do the street, the Vassar Street eventually in the future, there's another piece of sidewalk that needs to be built that will connect Charles Avenue to what's currently there. So as you go through them, we piece them together, build them together, so.
Are there any comments or questions from members of the public? Last chance for members of the public? Okay, I'm hearing none, so we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
And motion support. Any comments or questions? Last chance. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried, and the hearing is closed. Next, we are to adopt a resolution to approve the Harvard Special Avenue District Rule Number Two of 2023 and establish a payment schedule and set the interest rate once again. Are you ready?
Yep. Move to adopt the special assessment for sidewalks due June 1st, 2024. Unable to pay, five years at 5.25% interest.
Thank you, Michelle. Support. And motion support. Any comments, questions? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say yes or no. Okay, the motion has passed, and we established the schedule and the interest rate once again. Good job. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Nice work. And by the way, on the Iowa Street project last night, we were out looking at Christmas lights, and my grandson declared that road to be very smooth. It was noticeably different.
He was like, "Thank you."
So I was impressed that he picked up on that all as well.
Hopefully, he was walking the sidewalk, too.
No, we were driving. But I think he goes home from daycare that way.
Dramatically different, all the way through.
I'm sure his mother's talked to him about how smooth it is. It was fun, though. Okay, we'll move on down to the consent agenda. We'll move to resolutions. First, we're to consider adoption of an annual resolution of intent for fiscal year 2025, which declares Elma Transit's intent to provide public transportation services and apply for state financial assistance with its annual plan in accordance with Public Act Number 51. Your pleasure. Approve. Support. And motion support. Any background you want to share?
Just as, as the. Yep, this is, as it stated, the annual agreement that we decided, again, we will provide transit services to our, our city and our district, and for that, we will need funding from the state of Michigan, and we say we provide those services, and the state of Michigan will provide us funding to do so. It's a lot longer now, but it's, that's shorter than it is.
Any other comments or questions? Brett, did you want to add anything?
That's, this is our yearly go-around with this. The fiscals are different than what the city fiscal is, so we're currently working on FY25, where I'm not, so this is why I'm here tonight.
Well, with that, no more comments or questions. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried. We should be good to go, and we'll get funding for fiscal 2025. Next is to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Michigan Department of Transportation fiscal year 2025 contract, clauses certification for Elma Transit, acknowledging review contract clauses and compliance requirements on behalf of the city of Elma.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion support. Any comments or questions?
Again, annual, and we must agree to the stipulations for the funds and operational compliance requirements to run our transportation department.
All strings attached.
It's huge, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in support on the table. All those in favor, please say yes. We have a motion and support on the table. All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. The motion is carried. Thank you. Moving down to agreements. First up, we're to consider a resolution to approve a conditional transfer of real property pursuant to Act 425 of 1984 described as property number 29-12-033-012-00, and property number 29-12-033-013-10, which everybody knows those, I'm sure.
Yes.
Support.
Got motion support.
And as we discussed at our last meeting, this is where the ball field is for the college and the soccer fields. And then the parcel that's just north of it, the empty parcel there, as part of our 425 agreement with Pine River Township, providing them water for their developments out on Alger and 46, certain pieces of property will come in with, to the City of Elma when they require water and sewer. And this is the case there. They're going to be building their new fieldhouse out there, needing the water and sewer for that new facility. So those two pieces will come into the city as a part of the agreement. So this is our, our side of it, signing that we are accepting the property and the township will approve an agreement similar to, on their side, saying that, that those parcels will come inside the city.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Got one extension. Thank you.
As an employee of the, of the college, right?
Yes. Sorry, yeah. All right, number two is consideration of a resolution to adopt an amendment to the Patrol Officers Association of Michigan collective bargaining agreement to change the payment dates for training stipends to certified training officers, and also to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the amendment. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Motion support.
Yes.
What's going on here?
Uh oh. Under our collective agreement, and the next one is our command officers, which are our sergeants, so they're basically the same. We have trained officers that train our other officers. In the past, we sent officers off to third-party trainers. You got to pay them for travel, you do lodging, meals, some overtime, some, you know, sometimes. This way, we've, in the last collective bargaining agreement for both the patrol and the command officers, they decided, well, if we could train a couple of our officers here and here, that they could do them internally, which saves us a lot of money that way. And then provide them a little extra money to, to do that training. And currently underneath both those agreements, the payments go out on our fiscal year, which is July 1, but all the training materials and the requirement, the reporting of those certifications being trained, completed and submitted are on a calendar basis. So to sync these up, we've talked back and forth with the union and just make this amendment to have the payments and be on a fiscal year, I'm sorry, as a calendar year instead of our fiscal year. So they're congruent. So there's just a little easier to understand and move forward. I don't know why it wasn't that way to begin with, which is sure to be.
You're proposing logic?
Yes, yup. This is, it's, yeah, something that was there when I got here, so. And this will help because we'll be going into our new collective bargaining agreement here coming this summer. So that will be already taken care of, so. A little preemptive to that, so.
Terrific. Strictly a timing issue though.
It's a timing issue, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think we have a motion on the table. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, everybody? All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried and we've changed the timing there. Item number three, we are to consider a resolution to adopt an amendment to the Command Officers Association of Michigan collective bargaining, collective bargaining agreement to change the payment dates for training stipends to the certified training officers, and also to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the amendment. Your pleasure.
Move to adopt.
Support.
Motion support. Similar story.
Same story, exact same story.
Exact same story. We already covered that, so. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Okay, couple down. Moving down to reports of officers, officers, boards and committees. Commissioners may remove, may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any item within this section for individual discussion vote. Before us this evening, we have the City of Elma Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report by Ellie Barnes of Yo and Yo. Take a bow. The Elma Transit Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, I presume also by Ms. Barnes, Ms. Barnes, excuse me. The Elma Transit November 2023 Writership Report, and the Elma City Managers Newsletter for December 12. Your pleasure.
Love to receive number three, the Elma Transit November 2023 Writership Report.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to accept number three. Any comments or questions? All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. We'll move back. Anybody want to make a motion on number one?
Sure.
I assume you want to take them one at a time?
Yeah.
I assume. Right, for your motion.
Support.
That's a motion to receive number one.
Thank you. So we have a motion support on the table for number one. Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report by Ellie Barnes.
You're up.
Ellie.
Showtime.
Can follow Dave.
I know, I have to give them a break here.
Ellie, pull the, pull the mic over to, are we still using that?
No.
We're not using it? Okay, nevermind.
Doesn't actually work.
Nevermind.
It's all coming from the boom mic up there.
Are you looking or does this?
It's up to you. Mouse works, if you want to do it. Just a left click.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you for having me at tonight's meeting. I'm here to present the fiscal year 2023 audit results. We're going to go through a brief summary of what's in the statements, talk about the opinion, talk about internal controls, and what a great job your staff are doing. So this year, the city received an unmodified or clean audit opinion. That's what you want me to tell you?
Yes.
So excellent job there.
Wanted that for years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, actually, you've had that for years. It's the internal control piece that's, you know, buggered up a little bit. Okay, so we're going to talk about some of the numbers within the financial statements, starting with the general fund. So here you can see for the past five fiscal years, what revenue comparison looks like within the various sources of revenue that this fund receives here at the city. In total, the general fund received about 5.4 million in revenues. You can see that a few of these categories exceeded last year. Charges for services was the only one that was slightly lower. Property taxes increase as there's changes in taxable value. That's majority of the change there. On the intergovernmental side, there's some more funding coming in at the state level and then some at the federal level as well. And then on the other category there, there were some contribution dollars that came in, that increased there. So really, your revenues are, are pretty consistent with the prior year, up, but pretty consistent in the categories. And I think now we'll start to see these kind of stay leveled out and not so much fluctuation. There was a lot of fluctuation for a little while due to the accounting and how some things could or couldn't be recorded based on timing. So that is starting to level out and we don't have as many of those ups and downs due to that. Here we can see the expenditure side. So general fund had about 4.6 million in total expenditures for this fiscal year. Again, we're starting to see some of these categories leveled back out. The one that is different by the most significant portion is there in recreation and culture. Back in fiscal year 2022, there was a substantially larger contribution made to the library. I think that was about 350,000, and now you're back down to the $100,000 contribution amount. I believe in 2021, that contribution was not made at all, which is why there was an additional one in FY '22. So again, starting to see more of this level out. That's also going to be the result of pulling in some of that internal service fund activity into the general fund and not recording it all separately. So things like for your fiscal services, your technology costs, some of those. When you first pull them over, sometimes it's a little bumpy getting the allocations right within your general fund and then what you need to charge out to your other funds. So again, some of that is stabilizing now, which should give you a more clear picture going forward. On the fund balance side, you can see from the previous year that fund balance did increase. So it went up about 839,000. So general fund is sitting at 4.4 million in total fund balance, which for that fund is really healthy right now. You're at about 96% fund balance when we look at fund balance to your current year expenditures. So I know with all of the kind of ups and downs we've had, you can tell just from the chart, we, we go down, we go up, we go down, we go up. Those years where we saw a lot of that fluctuation is due to those timing differences. And had some of those timing differences worked out better, we would have seen a little more clearer path. But again, those are, are not in there. There is some, I think there was 173,000 is the largest kind of timing difference of when a revenue was recorded versus an expenditure. And that's just because out of the city's control as to when some money came in for a grant. So that will actually help fund balance in the fiscal year you're currently operating in, because you won't have the expenses for the project, but you will have the revenue coming in. Switching gears to a couple of the enterprise funds. This is your wastewater utility fund. The top line is your net position amount. So you can see that that has continued to trend upwards. It sits at about 9.4 million at the end of this fiscal year. And then because those funds are so capital asset intensive on the balance sheet, we want to look and see how much cash and investments is really on hand that you have to work with. So that's the blue line there, and that came in at about 3.5 million at the end of the fiscal year. I like to kind of take it one step further and I'll look and see what do your current liabilities look like? So do you have debt in that fund that you need to pay off? Was there a large amount of accounts payable accrued at year end? What's really the working capital look like at the end of the year? So for you, that's pretty close to the same as your operating cash and investment, working capital, in at about 3.3 million. On the water utility side then, net position within that fund comes in at about 5.9 million. That fund's been relatively stable with, within net position. A lot of that probably due to the fact that GAWA now exists, and that's kind of stabled out some of the charges to that fund and helps get a clearer picture on the revenue side. And then that fund had about 2.7 million in cash and investments at the end of the year, with working capital of about 2.3 million. So a decent amount of cash built up within that fund. When we take a look at the city's long-term obligations, we have three categories. We have bonds and notes, which you can see have been decreasing pretty consistently here over the past five years. In total, that sits at less than $4 million. So not a significant portion of long-term debt really for a city. Compensated absences really is a minimal amount for your city, less than 500,000. And again, that's remained relatively consistent. The crazy spike you see this year is in your net pension liability, which nobody loves, and is going to be the result of the market conditions primarily at December 2022. So the numbers that get recorded at 6:30 '23 really are a six-month lag. And, and the market at that time was not performing very well, which caused a significant loss that was recorded within the system, which is why the net pension liability increased. So hopefully the market holds strong here for a couple more weeks, and that would be very positive for home municipalities to start seeing maybe that, that pension liability go back down a little bit. But nothing, nothing you can really do about that at the moment. You've been making the regular payments you're required to. You can always choose to put more into the system, but you really have to balance that with all of the other needs of the city. And sometimes that's not the best decision or use of your dollars. All right, internal controls. Also, this is the portion of my presentation that usually takes a very long time and will be quite short tonight. So your finance director and his team continue to do an amazing job. They are still cleaning things up, but we're down to the smaller items to clean up and really focus on fine tuning areas. So we did not have any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or material non-compliance items that required to be brought to your attention. So that is excellent news and really a huge testament to all the work that they're doing. I know it's not been easy. I know sometimes there's still situations that come up that get confusing and aren't easy, but they're really doing a good job of focusing their efforts and maintaining now the systems that they've been putting in place. So we did have one management comment, and this relates to anytime a payment is made electronically through your banking system, we really would like to see more segregation of duties within this. Right now, one person could both initiate and authorize an electronic payment to go out, and we would really like to see your system set up so that if someone initiates that payment, they can not also authorize it. We really would like to see two people. Because with one person, essentially, they could just take everything if they so chose to do. If you have two people, then obviously for fraud to happen, you'd have to have collusion between at least two people, which is harder to have happen. So an area that, that would be great to, to clean up. We had a few other verbal things that we talked about throughout the audit, that they could work on, some best practice kind of things, but nothing more significant that should be brought to your attention. And I would take any questions.
Questions? Just the one thing, have you looked at the system that we're using for, I assume this is the ACH origination system? Is that what?
I don't know if you've made any changes since we were here.
Um, as far as like actually fixing the comment, it's been fixed.
So, there you go.
So the system did allow for that. I mean, it was all set. It's just a matter of bits and then it did the fix.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Good job. That was the answer I was expecting, and happy to hear it. So great.
Most hard to do the vings watch it too, so.
Yeah. Best practice, so. Should be done.
And it should be done, and it has not, so.
Okay. Nobody else?
Can I make a comment?
Of course.
Wow. Ten years I've been sitting in this seat, and for ten years I've been waiting for the audit. When we would hear, "No problems," kind of thing. And it's, it's been a long time coming. We saw a little bit of the sunshine starting to come over the horizon last year. And today is bright sunny blue skies all the way through. And thank you to Curtis and your team and everybody else who's involved with the finance for getting us here. It has not been easy, but wow, and thank you.
Certainly have to add. Thank you, Ellie, for bringing us good news.
Yes, you're welcome.
So if there's no further comments, I believe we have motion on the table to accept fiscal 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Your pleasure.
Move to receive.
Oh, we have, I think we have.
No, we have.
So those in favor would be yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Any opposed would be no. And motion is carried. We received the report. And now for the Elma, I guess no. We'll entertain a motion for the 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for Elma Transit, item number two.
Some more.
Support.
Motion support. And are you going to talk again, Ellie? Is this yours or not?
I don't usually present one. It's, it's really the same story.
Okay.
There's no findings or issues with that one. You just have to upload a separate report to the state, which is why we do two.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Are we good with this? Okay. All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion is carried. Thank you. Anyone interested in the City Managers Newsletter, number, item number four?
Some more.
Got motion support. Eric, your turn.
Yes, um, piggybacking off the transportation, the state of Michigan finally gave us thumbs up to submit a RFQ to them to, for their review, to then go out for qualifications for architect engineers, for the additional building, for the, the transportation that we received grant funding through the federal government with almost two years ago now, hasn't it?
It's been 20 years.
Yeah, two years ago. So once we get that back in, that will go out, qualifications. How this process works, it's similar to some of the, they do with M.Aero. We look through them, we find what we consider our most qualified lender, architect or engineer. We talk to them, negotiate with them after the fact of what the cost will be for the engineer and architectural drawings, and then bring those back to this board for approval. So just the beginning of this. So we will be back to you probably a couple times before this is all said and done and out for any sort of construction bids. But it finally is here from at least standpoint of pulling out.
Finally.
Yes, yes, it's, it's been there. So anyway, that's where we're at, yes. On the ARPA funds, our remaining ARPA funds, we finished up Lot Three and Lot Two, and we were going to spend as much as we could of our ARPA money on those parking lots downtown that have been sitting there for, that are part of two decades. And those are all done, in really good shape. The remaining funds that we have available is around $300,000. We do have three more lots downtown to take care of. Lot One, which is the one just north of the hardware. Lot Six, which is behind the Elma Sewing Center. And Lot Seven, which is behind the Brayhearts area there. We had discussed a little bit since I wrote this to you for some timing of all the projects that we've got going on next year with water. But that being the case, after discussing with staff, we may be able to do some of this internally as opposed to going out to the engineers. Meaning, they told me that they wouldn't be able to get to it because they are busy with not just us, but other municipalities across the state. So they were pushing this out further to, to do the work. So, which I appreciate, at least they're being honest that, hey, we can't handle all of it. Once we are underway here around June, July, most of the, the pressure on the staff will be on the engineers to do the onsite oversight of the water projects. So that will alleviate our engineering tech, Christine Seiya, who was helping us out this summer with the projects in the neighborhoods and the downtown, to be there to oversee if we wanted to move forward with one more parking lot this construction season as opposed to the next construction season. I don't have any numbers for you on which one to pick. We were looking at number seven, just for simple fact, we thought that one made the most sense with the amount of usage that it gets. And most sense with the amount of usage that it gets and the dollars that we have available and what we'll have to foot with it to make that work. But from there, to get the last two parking lots done, whichever it may be, Lot 1 or Lot, in Lot 6, say those are the last two remaining, we will have to go out there some kind of a bond to finish those, those two out. But the good news is, we feel now, after discussing with staff, that we should be able to do one of these parking lots this coming construction season as opposed to the following season. We will, we will back to this group to discuss costs and how much we would need to draw from general fund to, to get that project done. Next up, our wastewater side of things. We've been dealing with the drinking water, state revolving loan funds. As you know, we've submitted for the clean water, state revolving loan funds, and clean water is the sanitary sewer, the wastewater treatment plant. We have submitted that, and at this point where we're at is looking at how to best go about design oversight and getting the best project done for what we can afford to do with the grant dollars that we'll, or revolving loan dollars that we'll receive. What we'd like to present to the commission is what's called performance-based design building. State of Michigan authorized this almost five years ago to use as a tool with the types of funding that municipalities have at their, ready to use for capital improvements. What this basically does, as opposed to going out and hiring an engineer, come in and then to draw things up, we go out, basically offer a request for proposals, kind of like what we're doing for the transit building, find the most qualified engineer or architect, bring them on board, they design out the project, working with, with the staff from top to bottom. And we did include the detail on the improvements that need to happen at the wastewater treatment plant. We're not going to go through those because someone that has a much better understanding of wastewater treatment facilities wrote that out, so as you want to get in the details, we'll let you read that. But underneath this, after we send out the RFQ, we'll get those in, score them, find the best fit for you, bring that back to this board, and they'll shoot that consultant. From there, they get into the design work. They'll do the design, they, they'll do the construction oversight, and then what's different on the, on the very back end of this, it's a, they fix the cost of the project once the bids come in. And whatever that may be, they're responsible for any overruns in case, you know, a lot of things that we have going on today, there's a lot of cost changes that happen during this, those change orders, those sorts of things. They fix the price, whatever that is at the bid that comes in, that's the price throughout it. They're responsible for if something's not quite done right. We've had that conversation here, and then just, just recent past about, you know, okay, if this isn't done right, who is responsible for this and who's on the hook for paying for that extra to get that done right. This, under this, this format, they are by contract on the hook for all those types of things. If something's wrong, say from the subcontractor level, they are responsible for reaching out and working with the subcontractor to get whatever may be the issue fixed, and if there is an extra cost to that, they're responsible for those costs. This project and all those items that need to be fixed at the wastewater treatment plants are, it's very complex, something that we don't have internally for sure to do, to necessarily deal with. So to have someone on board that has done this work before, that we can count on, and when we sign the dotted line on moving forward the project, that it is from a security standpoint of us knowing that's going to be done right. If it's not done right, then it's up to our consultant, the person that we've chosen, to take care of the, that issue.
I guess it concerns me, I mean, and it's, you know, you have risk on either type of project or either way you approach it, but if you've got the, this engineer firm or whatever that's on the hook for cost overruns and whatnot, you know, and you get midway into a project, and we've all done so many projects, you know, you get into it and, oh, well, I didn't see this, I didn't see that, this needs to be fixed too, these things start adding up. You know, I guess what prevents that individual, that firm from starting corners perhaps, that making choices that are less, less in our best long-term interest than the alternatives might be? I mean, how do you kind of mitigate that in this process?
Wouldn't that be, don't they have licenses for that? They're risking losing their license.
There's licenses, but I mean, unless you specify, you know, you got a Smith and Wesson pump versus a, you know, brand X pump or whatever, and, you know, this one costs $1,000, this one costs $10,000, and, you know, we were planning on the $10,000 one, but we're getting tight on budgets, you're going to get a $1,000 pump, by that type of thing.
When the bids come in, it's, it's a fix.
It's very, that, that specific.
That's specific down to those things. We've been given the example, there's a university that used this form here down with Detroit area, and that firm basically had to eat, because steel went up so, so much in that time period, so they had to eat some cost overruns on that. What you spec out in that bid, when it goes out, is what you get. As they've stated to us, as much as we want to be involved from the staff point of what is specked out is, we're there saying, like you said, if you want a Cummins engine as opposed to a generic V8, then it is going to be a Cummins engine that comes in, and that's what gets bid, bid specked out, whatever that price is for that Cummins engine at that time the document is signed, is what they're on the hook for.
And I know there's risk on the other side too.
Yes.
If you do it, cost plus, costs go up and you're on the hook for that, so it's.
And.
This is new, but it makes me a little nervous.
No, no. Yes, and like I said, this is something that's never been endorsed until recently by the state of Michigan. So they've gone through this from a standpoint of making sure it gets, it's in their best interest then to make sure it's designed right and can be built the way they're saying it should be built. So that kind of alleviates some of those issues that we've talked about here recently, that, you know, how come they didn't think of this, or how come they didn't do this? It is, it's on them to make sure they've got everything there that they need. So, but we haven't gone off yet, that the, did provide in the packet a draft copy of the RFQ, I'm sorry, RFQ that will go out, and we should have that back within the next three weeks or so, and then we'll go from there.
So we'll still have ample opportunities to review and actually approve things, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Like even when we get the bids in, we have.
You can still say no.
Yes.
Okay.
But you have, you know, dollars that you've invested in engineering and things like that, which at this weight, it's, so, on either side.
Yeah, either way, if, first we can.
So, thank you for that, and then we just wanted to give you a quick update also on wastewater progress on the other side, on the industrial pretreatment. We haven't talked about that in a while. We do have our document that staff is reviewing from the new ordinance standpoint that we'll have to come back before this board to adopt, to set the new parameters for the pretreatment programs. Currently, no one's using them, but since we were, we were hoping that one industrial facility in the, in the town who was going to do that, they decided to go a different route, so they're not going to need their IPP program, so they're not doing that. But since we were already going down our path, we're just going to get this thing done and, and have it available. So whatever industry comes to us and needs this particular program, it's already ready to go, and it's got to do their side. So that will be hopefully here in the next, back to this board here in the next month or so. And then our ongoing sodium hypochlorite convergent project, we will be going, having bids coming in soon. Right now, we do have a contractor walking through to look at lead and asbestos abatement type issues, the type of year of facility, there's definitely those types of issues there, and any of those pieces of the plant that we may deal with, with this conversion, we have to make sure that we're taking care of those as part of that. So hopefully in the next couple of months, that too will be back before this board for some construction in this coming, incoming year. And then lastly, it's that time of year where we recognize our employees that have been with us for 5, 10, 15, 20, 25. This, and then this year, we have two employees that we recognized at our last meeting that have made 50 years. So, so we'd just like to thank those folks that are on that list there, and we do really appreciate it. And like I said, the 50s, I don't know if we'll ever have something like that again, but we do have.
They may be heard of.
Yes, right. You never know. So I'd like to thank them and their, their service here and providing their talents. And sometimes, you know, think about it, their, their time that they have spent here from the actual time, that they are here or after hours going and doing things, it's much appreciated and, and, well, how we thank them is just a, you know, a few dollars gift card that, you know, based on the years of service, and it's, I know it's not enough, but that's a little token appreciation for those different years of service. And, and all those folks on that list, we couldn't run the city without them, so very much appreciate their, their service to us. And that's all I have tonight.
That's all.
And that's all.
That's a good chunk of information. So thank you. Okay, I believe we have motion on the table to accept the newsletter. Are there any last chance for any questions or comments? All those in favor for receiving that newsletter, would be, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is carried, we've received the newsletter. Moving down to appointments, first off, we're to consider a resolution to reappoint Ruth Cool to the Alma Housing Commission for a five-year term, which will expire December 31st, 2028. Your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Motion support. Any comments or questions?
We do ask these people, I mean, I only ask.
Not her, she's, she's just happy.
I only ask because I'm out here. And I'm fine, but I just want to make sure we do talk to these people before we decide. Yes, okay, thank you.
Glenn and Ruth's case, they've sent that from Housing Commission to us.
Okay, perfect.
And that was at their last meeting, and she told them that she would serve.
Okay.
Long standing member there.
Yes.
Certainly. Okay, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, thank you. Next up, we're to consider a resolution to reappoint Russ Wright and Ted Godfrey to the zoning board of appeals for three-year terms ending May 1st, 2026.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion support. I assume they also have been contacted and, so, any additional comments or questions? If you're not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, and we've approved two more, or appointed two more, excuse me. Consideration of a resolution to appoint the city manager and mayor to the Greater Gracian Development Incorporated Board of Directors for one-year terms expiring December 31st, 2024.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion support, comments or questions? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion is carried, thank you. Number four, consideration of a resolution to reappoint Roxanne Harrington to the Gracian Area Water Authority Board for two years, expiring January 11, 2026.
Support.
Motion support, don't care what Roxanne thinks. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. And the motion is carried, thank you, Roxanne. We appreciate your service there. That's an important board, no doubt about it. Number five, consideration of a resolution to reappoint Ellen Rifter and Jessica Gilkins to the Alma Planning Commission for terms ending June 30, 2026.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion support, any comments or questions? If you're not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion is carried, and we have reappointed those two as well. No one finished business. Next is appropriations. Is there interest in paying the bills tonight?
Yes, please.
Remember, the auditor is in the house, so.
Yes.
Okay, so we have motion and support. In front of us, any questions or comments? If you're not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The bills have been paid. All right. Commissioner comments? Lori, would you like to start out tonight?
Yes, congratulations on doing such a great job to our finance team under his great leadership, and thank you for the wonderful presentation, and also great job on Come Home to Alma. I don't think I've ever seen that many people downtown. Weather helped, but it was a wonderful night.
It was. So.
Did what Lori just said. Congratulations again, Curtis, for the job you've done. Ally, it's good to see you with good news. And, yeah, it was a great night at Come Home to Alma, and wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We'll be back.
Hope we can.
True. Well, I've just been here for a year, so it seems like it's always good news.
You've missed out.
But congratulations again, that's fantastic. Oh, yeah, Come Home to Alma was wonderful, had so much fun there. I don't think I've ever seen that many people packed into just the downtown street before. I mean, we were looking at the people, and they were like eight people deep watching the parade. The parade could barely get through, there were so many people down there.
And the line of kids had moved out to the center.
Yeah, they were kind of moving and moving. So that. Another thing I noticed this week I wanted to mention was the city put up a video of leaf pickup on Facebook, and that had 8,500 likes the last time I saw and 600 shares. I clicked on the shares and was looking through the comments, and it's filled with comments of, I wish we had this sort of service in our town, look at what they're doing in Alma, and that was really, really neat to see that sort of attention for, for that bunch there, so fantastic. Eight, 8,500 likes is quite a few for a city Facebook page that I think has like 5,000 followers, so, you know, that was neat.
Sarah gets credit for that. Her post.
Well, nice work.
I didn't see you in the video.
I just felt the post included the video, that's all I got.
Well, that was a good one.
It worked out well.
Any else?
Yeah.
Okay. Roxanne.
Sincere thank you, Curtis, to you and your team, and, and to all the people who voluntarily agreed to be on the many committees that make up all of us, so it's, I mean, we do this here, but there's a lot of work that goes into all of this before it gets to our table, and so.
And we take all the glory.
Exactly, yeah, all the glory. So between the staff and the, the many other people in the community that volunteer their time, just thankful for that. Yeah, it was great fun to come home to Alma. It's always nice just to walk around and see people that you see in a business, you know, working, and, you know, kids are like, what are you doing out of the office, Ms. Roxanne? I don't live there, they got changed occasionally. So, so it was good fun, so thank you for that.
Of course. You don't live there.
I know, it's wrong. That keeps saying, where are you sleeping here? I was right here on the desk. Seems like I'm here a lot.
It's their roles. Okay, Roger.
Again, Curtis and team, thank you so much. We really have been waiting for that for a long time. There was a time when we would see Ally or whoever was representing from Yo and Yo, oh gee, it's that time again, you know? What are we going to hear this, this year that we're not going to want to hear? And it's, it's wonderful. Like I say, everybody who's been involved in that, and it has not been easy, and I know from your part, and taken a lot of work, but thank you so much on that. The Come Home to Alma thing was absolutely special. It really was a lot of fun down there. I couldn't find any place to eat, but, you know, that's, that's okay. That's a good deal, that's the way it should be.
Oh, I did want to take our garbage cans in for the winter.
Some of them we do.
Because I, we bought blocks and could not.
Oh.
We used Bailey Who's garbage can to put our garbage cans in because they were the only place.
Yeah, we take some of them in for the winter because typically we don't have.
Okay, that's correct. But that's what I was telling my people. I said, I think, you know, now that I think about it, I think we probably take them in for the winter, because I know I've seen.
Next year, Granger can put a car over by.
So we do have them out there, just, we did, we take in some because.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Roger.
I just, one comment about the, the parade that I think we ought to kind of make standard for all of our parades, the use of diesel airhorns on a sustained time. I don't mind them being, you know, blasted a little bit, but there were two semis toward the end of the parade. I don't think one was Granger's, I'm not sure what they were.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, and I was standing right there, and my watch went off because the decibels exceeded 100. And it wasn't just a blap blad on it, it was a sustained 10 or 15-second blast on the air horn.
That's good for the little ones.
Yeah, those, those need to be controlled. That's extremely loud to the point of causing hearing damage, shit. Anything over like 96, and mine hit 102.
That's a good point.
So just need to be careful with that. But it was, it was a wonderful time. I really enjoyed it. That's all, folks.
Roger.
Sir. I do, since we brought up the Facebook video, I just want to take a minute to thank Christine Seiya, who did the video for us. Seiya, who did the video for us, and I don't know if you noticed, a couple weeks before that, we posted a video of some men working in the hole. We, I talked about digging to China to actually install the water line, Christine also took that photo, so she'll be taking some more videos, and we'll be getting some more fun stuff up on Facebook.
That's great, that would be successful.
Yep, more of that people see, then they...
Yeah. Great, thank you. Thank you, thanks, our thanks on Christine for that, so that's a great project.
Thank you.
Eric? Yep, just a couple things, yes, Curtis and the finance department's done a great job, but also, like I told my staff the other day, thank you for getting everything to Curtis to get to Ally that he needed, that necessarily always the case, when you call somebody and say, I need this report, and they get that to it, it makes the orders like much quicker and easier, makes Curtis' life much easier and quicker also. So thanks to all the department heads and everybody that had their stuff together and getting it to them, so I appreciate that. Pine Avenue, just want to give a quick update to everybody for that, we had a street collapse that we needed to take care of, if we didn't, so we were fearful that it would completely seal, and there's just, it takes from hospital and everything else. But anyway, they did get the pipe in yesterday, today they cambered further, no more, at least damaged enough where we can put the hole back together. The hole is filled up, it will be barricaded probably till Friday. What we're looking to do is fill the hole, or fill the top with crushed concrete until spring, and when we can bring in a asphalt crew to put a new surface on it. We won't leave it that way once we get to spring, but the cost to bring in the asphalt, try to bring in some asphalt company, there is one that's still doing work right now, but yeah, yeah, bucks to the tune of about almost $30,000 to bring them in and do that little piece, so, so we're not going to do that, so it'll be crushed concrete.
Somebody thought we intentionally planned this, just wait. This was not, we did not plan this, we spread the news.
Yeah, we would have liked to wait until, because we remember total reconstruction in 2025, where all water sewer will be replaced, new surface on the road, but you can't wait, so.
Right.
It just, it needs the hospital, plus all the businesses along there, and the school, all that sort of thing, so, that had to be replaced. It is clay, so, usually clay that was put in probably twenties, thirties, so that's how long that has to spend on the ground, so...
Quarantine's expired?
Quarantine's expired, yeah, yeah. Believe in PDC, they're putting the ground, should only last maybe seven, five years, so, and we're probably going to have there longer, you know, just how things go.
If it's 100, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's how things go, so, we were very fortunate that we were working on the sewer line on the north side of Washington, Crawford had equipment on site, so they were able to save some money with mobilization since they had equipment there, so, thanks for the commission being so understanding that we had to do some works of repair this year, and thanks to the school, because of, I talked to the superintendent this morning, and it seemed like for the most part, considering, and all the parents and everybody else coming dropping off, things were fairly smooth, comparable, you know, considering how much disruption was there, so thanks to everybody, and for the inconvenience, and by the end, hopefully by Friday, at least the street will be open, and it'll be crushed concrete until spring.
Yeah, and I've noticed, I think that power when I came, do you know, what is that, something different down by the river, where they were working with a bunch of crews?
Oh, that, we had a tree fall on Walnut between North River and Euclid, and that is closed for right now until the power company can get there tomorrow to make, you know, to reestablish the falls, so they're like this.
No, it's going to be a dark cold night. Maybe I will go to the store.
But that's what happened there.
Comfortable there, so, yeah.
That's...
It'll be repaired tomorrow, isn't it?
Yes.
Maxing will come.
That's what we're told.
I have heat.
So...
Well, you did have heat. Moving back to you, yeah. That's all, anything else? Okay. Well, I would certainly echo the congratulations, everybody else has mentioned, you know, Curtis, great job to you and your team, appreciate that. Very sorry to report, we can't give you a raise for it, but we do appreciate you working.
He probably knows better than we do.
But also congrats, you know, the staff across the board, everybody that contributes to that, you know, from the top to the bottom across the city, and, you know, the crews that pick up the leaves, and the people that dig the holes, and clean up their gutters and all that stuff, so, just a terrific crew, very proud of that. And the list that you presented, the time they've put in, the years of dedication and service, and...
Can I say one more thing?
Of course. Roger?
Just about that, I did the math, 50 years of work, 50 hours or 50 weeks a year, that's two weeks off, times 40 hours, times 50 years, is 100,000 hours of work. That's a lot.
That's a good, long career for most of us, I'm sure. But anyway, great, great news all around, a great meeting, so congratulations are in order for Eric, you ran for a road run the day after the Christmas celebration, that was, you did a success.
Yes, we had visitors, we had 149 people sign up, and over 100 of those were from out of, out of the city, so...
And I ran into a lot of very happy people in that, so I was, they were very pleased, so, very good news there as well, so, thanks to everybody that volunteers across the city and the many, many activities that people participate in, it's just really cool to see, and all the generosity that, there were just a lot of it going on around town today. I mean, the holiday season always brings it on people, and certainly this year is no exception, just across the board, you know, starts kind of Thanksgiving, Roger, with you and your Thanksgiving dinner, and just swells from there, so, thanks to everybody for all you do. With that, we'll open up to the members of the public, if anybody would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to share your thoughts. Anybody care to talk tonight? Please do.
My name is Mark Crow, and I live on Iowa Street, 1,006 Iowa Street, and I'd like to personally thank Christine for her work this summer. She was very approachable, and whenever we had a question, she would answer, and she was very forthright, I appreciate that. There is a, presently a lighted speed sign on Iowa Street, so I'm assuming that speed must be an issue. I was wondering if those speeds are being recorded, and if they are, can they be made public?
I think the machine records them, doesn't it?
Yes, if it's over there, if it's over there, saying we'll, we'll have them on the next, uh...
And I would also request that that speed sign be brought up Iowa Street to the west, where the speed is happening, because where it's posted right now, people are slowing down for the railroad tracks, because that railroad takes quite a dip when you hit that, if you hit that doing 30 mile an hour, you're going to bottom, you're going to hit the ceiling of your car. So, you know, I would give the city permission to put that speed sign right in my front yard if you want to, because with the new street, as you said, Mr. Mapes, it's very smooth, and now it's very fast. And Iowa Street is the only street that does not have speed signs on it. There are three streets in Alma that go from Smith Road to Wright Avenue, Orrick has speed signs, Iowa doesn't, and Superior does. Those are the only three streets that have access from Smith to Wright Avenue. And I know I've stood up here before, and we've been told that other streets don't have 25 mile an hour speed signs, well Gulfside has a 25 mile per hour speed sign, and that's a dead end. So I don't think they're going to be going much over 25 on that street. So I would like more policing on Iowa Street, at least give out a ticket once in a while, even if it's to me, I don't care, and we can slow things down a little bit. I know that if a car comes around Smith Road and hits the corner on Iowa and has to brake, they're going faster than 25 mile an hour. So, it's a concern for me, it's a concern for my grandkids, it's a good, we have a lot of families on that street, and the speed needs to be taken care of, and it's usually happening between 7:30 in the morning and 8:00, and between 4:30 and 5:00, when people go to work, when people are getting out of work. So, that's my concern, and I would be very pleased if it was addressed.
Very good.
Coming to that, the sign is gone, no, it's actually been gone for a week, about a weekend.
On Gulfside?
No, the speed limit sign.
Oh, that's gone?
Yeah, they pulled that.
Yeah, they typically move it...
Yeah.
Just at random, I don't...
Because it wasn't...
State of the Public Safety Director, I didn't know it was even over there.
They just kind of do their thing with that and move around.
And I think those people that gun it, find, there's somebody that has a very loud engine that guns it down by street, and, you know, between Pine and Euclid, so, I mean, they're...
But he's right, it's...
They're making the rounds.
The speeds.
Yeah. And it's, it's tough to catch them, because...
Yes.
There's only one or two cars on the road patrolling, and sometimes they know where those cars are at, unfortunately, and same thing on our road, the only fortunate thing we have on ours, I guess, is that it's so rough that they pay a price if they're going too fast on my house, so... Okay, anybody else from the public like to address the commission?
I guess I would make a public comment in support of that. I'm Barb Stone, and I live on 960 Iowa, right there on the curve, so, now that the parking has moved to the high side of the curb, it does seem to kind of slow people down, but I do have concerns that somebody's going to side swipe a car going through there, and, you know, we've got almost three-year-old and a five-year-old, so that's definitely a concern of ours that we've noticed since we've moved there, and it's definitely, I think, does seem like they're going quite a bit faster now with the new street, so, but agreed, like, the commuting time, I think, is the main time, and it's, I think they choose that street because it is less patrolled, and it's now a new street, so, there's no lights there, it's a straight cut through, so, yeah.
Okay, and I know Eric is going to place that on to the Public Safety Director.
There's enough parking signs, so I think we could get a couple stops, speed limit signs, I think, that wouldn't be super bad.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion's carried, you're joined, thank you very much, and thanks everybody for coming tonight.